We give a call to all who will stand up. It's the policy of the board to invite local pastors to pray. And today I welcome to the conference guest pastor, Congressman Arnold from the Lake Times Baptist Church. Pastor?
Let's open in prayer. Our heavenly Father, God, as we gather here before you today, we ask for your wisdom that we may go into your business and for the service of others at this meeting may reflect your goodness and may reflect your mercy and love, Lord, that it would be about impacting community and impacting lives for your people. God, I just pray that your hand would be on each and every person here today as they make these decisions, that your wisdom may guide them, that your spirit may fill them, that they may be able to discern that what you would have them to do, Lord, that all that they do may glorify your holy name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How about the thanks to Pastor and you're welcome to come in.
I was just flagging over the side, so I don't really see that.
Feel free to say. I'd like to welcome everyone here today. Um, couple of announcements. Uh, this is the last meeting for the month of November. We will not have a workshop. No, we did have another meeting, that one. This is it. We had a meeting on November ninth. Yes. No more meetings this month. We're not having a workshop. And the next meeting is December night at six P M. And that will be the last one of twenty nineteen. Um, I'd like to say that we have a few special guests. Um, and I would like to mention that Rosemary Edwards Wood, she's from Taylor County, Ryan Adams from Taylor County, and then Joanna Hand and Brian Booker, which is in court, except Rosemary, you're with a different company, but you're still working with the state. So they're gonna be here and later on in the meeting, uh, when it's time for public comment, if you have any questions for them, they've got all the answers about where Rose comes through here, right? But we're really pleased to have you here, uh, because there are a lot of questions and concerns, so, uh, welcome and again, thank you. At this time, uh, we are going into our reorganization of the board for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and I will let our clerk, um, go from here.
The first order is Dave Stevie and Alex, the new chairman for the next year for the board council commissioner. Now, the floor is an announcement for nominations for chairman. Do I hear nomination for chairman?
I nominate Commissioner Seigl. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Feigl has been nominated to be elected chairman of the board. Do I hear other nominations? I need a motion for the nomination to see. Next one. Commissioner Feigl made the motion?
Yeah.
She seconded the motion to see. Okay, I'll motion and second for the nomination to see. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, the, uh, next order of business is for the board to vote for Commissioner Feigl to be the new chairman of the board or to be reelected as chairman. So, I'll motion and second.
Motion.
Aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Commissioner Feigl, you're elected to be the chairman of the board and that's the way.
Thank you.
Now, the next is to you, the justice attorney.
Okay. Um, B, election of a vice chairman. Now, for me to nominate somebody, I have to pass this to the general.
I guess, I guess, that's the reason, if you're gonna leave, if you're gonna make that decision.
I will. I'd like to nominate, um, Commissioner Page to be the vice chairman.
Okay, I have a nomination for Commissioner Page to be elected vice chairman. Are there any other nominations for vice chairman? I need a motion and second for the nomination to see.
Second.
Say all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, a motion and second to elect Commissioner Page as the vice chairman.
What if you're elected?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, he's been elected vice chairman.
Second.
Now, board president.
Okay. C, discussion of board personnel. Um, as you all know, Conrad Bishop has been on our county forever, yes, Black Forest.
Yeah, great. About one five years. I think he's counted.
Yeah, what you did. Right. I'm gonna obtain a motion to retain Attorney Conrad Bishop.
I move.
And his auditors.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gifford, second by Commissioner Page. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
D, discussion regarding board meeting dates and times. Um, I went over this last night, and the only thing that I saw was Monday, September the seventh next year, it was Labor Day. And, um, if it was Tuesday, the board offered that we could have the meetings the next day, Tuesday the eighth, or the next, um, maybe the fourteenth.
Yeah, that works for me. These days work for me.
Um, how about you? Uh, I'm thinking about February. I would, I think Tuesday would work better. And Conrad, can you be here on, uh, Tuesday, uh, the seventh of Tuesday?
In September. That's right. That's right. I'll be here. Or, I'm gonna be here. One of us will be here.
Okay, all right, so we change, uh, we change to that day, uh, September, Monday, September the seventh, the Tuesday, the next day, Tuesday the eighth. Okay, the meeting is voted on that. We can bring this back.
Well, the first order was to keep the meetings at the same time.
Yeah, well.
The, the first Monday.
Well, we got that date, great, so, yeah.
So then you bring the calendar. Here, that's what's on end of the calendar. You'll wonder, do you have a calendar to vote in? Yes, I am, okay. So if you'll tell you're on the calendar, too, which I'll get across later that day.
Okay, and is everybody keeping the days the same and the time the same? Is that okay, everybody? Any changes needed, what's the list? Okay, so we'll keep it the same. Now, do we have a vote on that, any minute? Um, we need a motion to...
I move.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gifford, second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Okay, E, miscellaneous discussions, committee appointments, et cetera. I believe everybody got a copy of the current, uh, committee of terms.
I'm gonna go back and go, tell me if you have that time.
Stop, what?
The calendar, for next year.
I thought we did.
Maybe you're lying.
So what was the last motion for?
Yeah, let's just keep your time meeting, right?
Okay, okay, we need to officially adopt the count, the counter.
Motion to adopt count, let me say it first.
Motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Murphy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Okay, on the committee's time, let's go, got a copy of that. If you will, we'll have it out, and when we come back the next time, if you won't make any changes or if you're happy with the way it is, we'll do it that way, because I think it's unfair for everybody to have kept looking at it now unless you're really happy before you are. F, the board to approve the rules of procedure. Now, anything? Do we approve it and then suggest changes? Or suggest changes and then approve?
I would suggest changes and then approve.
Okay.
And you probably don't have to do this meeting, uh, they should, if you decide you want to make some changes, you'll table it and then you get the changes made and then approve.
Well, I, has everybody looked at the rules of procedure?
I would say, I would agree with them.
Okay, well, then, I want to say, the only thing that I found with certain D, it states that workshop on the first Thursday, so we need to change that. And, um, the other thing with thirty three, when it came to the list of board commissioners, uh, I think it listed the airport advisory committee. Um, I know we're not doing that one anymore. How about a laboratory committee? We don't do that either, do we? Are we still doing? Okay, well, I know that, that we don't do the airport, so we need to delete that, and I, I didn't see anything else, so. Is there a motion to approve the rules of procedure, to reduce?
Motion to approve the same, first.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Murphy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Item number three, approval of the agenda. There are, there is one addition, it will be point two A, the county attorney to discuss of the audit litigation. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda for today?
I'm here.
Okay, if not, is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
I'll move. Second.
Then a motion by Commissioner Gifford, second by Commissioner Page. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Number four, the board to receive and ever file the reports of received expenses and net income for September the thirtieth, twenty nineteen, on all constitutional offices. Any questions about that? Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Gifford. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. This and public hearings, number five, the board to receive proposals for commercial luggage collection services that for this day at nine A M. or as soon thereafter is possible. We only have one B. from Lake Forest.
I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go. Yeah. Yeah. You want to read the name? Or do I hold? James Ryan, myself. You want me to cut out all these ones? The weekly, there's a two week, a two day ticket. The two cubic yards for one dumpster is eighty one seventy five. For two, it's a hundred thirty eight thirty four. Three and four and five is not asphalt. The four cubic yard is for one is one oh one eleven. For two is one ninety seven fifty two, and the other is not asphalt. Six cubic yards is one forty eight fifty three for one and two seventy five sixty nine, and another cap 40 is not cap. For eight cubic yards, the first one is one seventy eight, eighteen. Two is three twenty thirty one. Three is four forty two thirty one. Four is five eighty two sixty one, and number five is not asphalt.
Per month?
And it says the base rate is to include the container rental fee. It's a weekly frequency of two days.
Okay, so this will go to the, uh, bid committee, and, um, more than likely come back on December the ninth, maybe. Okay? Uh-huh, thank you. Sure.
How do they use rights to compare what we're saying now?
Well, we'll argue that.
You'd argue that, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm... I want to make the board to receive this for funding for the wide music and self eating projects that for this day at nine oh five A M. are assumed thereafter as possible. I'll keep doing that, principal gift committee.
It'll be myself, I'm engineer, and Hank Evans, fellow work director, and Scott Knight, he wrote the committee. It'll be the same committee on item six, and number seven.
Thank you.
And, I'll note that, we need Hank and Scott Knight. He's been inspiring our student, too, and with this with their whole back row, all the opportunities that they have just up to be approached.
Is that here, man? I think you need to take that a little bit louder.
Well, I was saying that this would be a good opportunity for you to thank our individuals on the back row, who, um, who are members of the district student office, that provide us some new, uh, opportunities for you to draft some thought programs.
We took that, I don't know what we'd do without that, we wouldn't have to do any case loans, but that's our much.
There were five bases each on the...
Hey, there is five, P D and son. Anybody who would like to add, keep, keep three up there.
Anyone here in that line?
P D and son.
Should discuss with the bid form, and there'll be a long, um...
Long form?
Yeah.
The base bid?
Yeah.
Okay, the base bid, um, P D and son is two million, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Who's that from? P D?
P D.
P D?
P D.
Yeah.
And how long was this for?
A little longer.
We're supposed to look at the money, not the month.
Um, I'm gonna pay my bills, we'll be better than...
The next one is in capital, I have to call these corporations. Capital, I'll have to call them. Their total long form is two million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Don't get that.
Speaker Ruby, is something you're interested?
Is this in your district? It's in your district.
Oh, so. We can write that on the...
I went down that road the other day, and it feels really crumble. Okay, the next one is Pigott, Asol, and Sightworth L L C. And their total bid is one million, twenty-three thousand dollars.
P I D.
P I D, I don't speak to you.
They're all officers.
Yeah. The next bidder is Anderson Columbia, uh, Mike C. And their total bid is one billion, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. The next one is Kirk Construction Incorporated, the Black Forest. Kirk's bid is one million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighteen.
Okay, so this will go to the bid committee, um, and possibly be back, uh, on December the ninth?
Probably not. Um, simply because of the difference of between the budget and the lowest bid. And what I'll be doing is getting back into contact with U S P, giving them a good result. They, um, require us to provide some notice of the award, of the award, um, that's, so, let me talk to this review somewhere, where I have from a pricing standpoint, and see, um, we're looking at it, but it won't be the December ninth, uh, is there a second meeting or something? If not, it'll be the first one, the January, again, if I can get that.
What, what is the difference? Do you know about what's like a difference then? From this or is there...
Um, not quite the I, there's about three hundred thousand between it and the lowest bid. So you probably have another hundred grand included in I, uh, four hundred on, I mean, this week. Just to say that there is one below, two right adds, and two above, um, the expected price point.
Okay. We'll go on to item number seven. The board to receive bids for pine crest street self-eating projects that for this day at nine ten A M. are assumed thereafter as possible. Time's big, committee. We have, who will be it from that line? The first one is Anderson Columbia.
All same players except Kirk Construction. Okay, Kirk, Kirk's is primarily a site, um, they're more focused on site work for the non-asphalt intensive. Pinecrest is a nearly reserved residential asphalt, so you just have the asphalt companies there.
Okay, Anderson Columbia on Pinecrest Drive?
Horse Street.
Um, two bucks?
I said Horse Street.
It's four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and nine thirty cents. How's it come up with nine thirty?
Um, you know, I guess where they actually have a list of different patents, or the dog broke it down, difficult, did you beat it? And if what they thought is two dollars and nineteen square yards, and you've got three thousand of them, whatever turns out, that's what they usually put in.
So this is exact.
Um, I believe most of them will round a little bit, but they'll tell them that whatever number is the number. You know, one pin, you wanna take one pin, you beat it, and that's enough.
It's really amazing, um, first one, if you got a million dollars, you're good, so it's, it's too long.
No, it's a pattern. I'm not gonna hit, um, cap, that you got, some stuff in town, Hasty, whereas you may have another one right here that has a plant that's down the street, so they have a lot of left travel, and you can haul distance on something that is one of your largest, um, cost components in the dog. So you can make up a lot of ground if you don't have to haul it around.
Yeah.
And the next is P D and son on Pinecrest. Their bid is four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Four ninety-three?
Four ninety-three.
Yeah. Wow. The next one is Pigott, Asol, and Sightworth, Mary and Parker Bill. Their bid is three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The next one's got the last call for time here.
Uh, looks like you have any trudge in the bitters when you come back.
Okay, so it's different than any?
Yeah. It should still be same, come on.
Their bid is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty cents.
Okay. Okay, anyway. And this will come back, um, probably on Sunday or Tuesday.
I was just saying, we, um, right now we have, uh, just under two ditsy on this dog, so you can see you're still, you're running ten or so away without the P I. It's a quarter dog, um, but he wouldn't have as much P I burden on this one. But still, unless you may have to at least pass, um, some hurt pass, of course, and then I'll bring back the response and put the options before you, um, whether that's additional supplemental funding from U S P, if it requires us to, if we have any funding that we can outpay for it, or if we need to devise a scope that's, that we can, can trust what's available.
Thank you.
It's only out there for you.
Item number eight, the board to hold the first of two public hearings that for this day at nine fifty A M. are assumed thereafter as possible, to receive public input and notify the public of the possible grant...
And the next is P G and Son on Pinecrest. Their bid is four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Four ninety-three, four ninety-three. The next one is Pigott Asshole and Sightwork, Mary and Parker Bill. Their bid is three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The next one's got the last call, it's on there. On Sunday, yeah.
I hope it is.
Thanks, Gary.
Uh, looks like you had any questions, did you hear anything from the...
Okay, so it's different than...
Yes, thank you.
Their bid is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. Okay. Okay, anyway. This will come back, um, probably in a few days.
Okay, we're, um, right now we have, uh, just under two ditsy on this job. So you can see you're still, you're running ten or so away without the E I. It's a quarter job, um, but you wouldn't have as much E I burden on this one. But still, unless you may have to at least pass, um, some hurt pass, of course, and then I'll bring back the response and put the options before you, um, whether that's additional supplemental funding from B O P if it requires us to, if we have any funding that we can outpay for it or if we need to devise a scope that says we can, can trust what's available.
Thank you.
We'll outpay for it later.
Item number eight, the board to hold the first of two public hearings set for this date at nine fifty A M, are assumed they're act as possible to receive public input and notify the public of the possible grant application to the Florida Department of Parks and Recreation, Land and Water Contamination Fund Grant Assistant Program for the rehabilitation of housing parks at P E B. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, this public hearing is to receive board and public input for the possible community other grant application for land and water conservation funds for the renovation of housing parks. Um, the maximum amount of the grant we can reduce is two hundred thousand dollars, and we have to do a dollar for dollar match. We can use the rest for that or other things. And we would like to receive interest, um, for the type of work in your direction, um, whether or not we want to buy for it.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open the floor for the public. If anyone would like to come forward and finish this issue. Nobody? Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and we will have another public hearing, um, soon, on the next, uh, December the ninth. And, um, we'll, we'll get the public's attention, 'cause it's kind of beginning then.
I mean, I asked for board input as far as the shovel work, so that will be the public to have start. I know there's been staff discussion about, um, recently renovating the entire park. Is that still the intent of the board? Would you like to share any specifics with us?
I believe it was complete renovation.
Complete?
That's our only totally, the insurance, what we need to do at large. So that would include renovation of the restroom, um, any picnic areas, uh, possibly playgrounds, hay covers, um, renovating the parking lot, um, um, being free yardage now.
Yeah, all the things, all, anything that needs to be done to make it the way it should be.
No, we can't, you go on all that with two hundred thousand dollars. Those are expensive cars.
Well, as we move through this process, we will be asking to amend our state expenditure plan. Because if you'll recall, uh, the renovation of housing parks was one of the priorities for three times. So, we would break it up into pieces, as far as what we'd like to do with the funds.
Thank you. Item nine, the board to hold a public hearing set for this date at nine twenty A M, are assumed they're act as possible on the passage of a proposed or to prohibit smoking of tobacco, use of tobacco products and vaping on certain Taylor County properties. Um, is there a motion to read this ordinance by power only?
A motion, yes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mundy, second by Commissioner Page, all in favor if they are.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries.
Ma'am, no one of the Taylor County's law, which prohibits smoking of tobacco, use of tobacco products and vaping at our own and houses parks, Southside Park, Ennis Springs historical park, P E B, total parks that are down in Fort Conble, State Road Community Center and Park and Steen Hatchie Community Center and Park, providing penalties, providing severability and providing effective data.
Thank you. The floor is now open for the public. If you would like to come and speak about this issue, it comes forward now. Inspector Maynard, well?
First of all, I'm Lucy Ryan. Um, I think that this is a good, I'm not opposed to this, going for that, I'm not opposed to this. I am more of an opposed to it being certain Taylor County properties, it should be all early. Are, do our employees have a, um, tobacco free work area?
I'm having a sit down with, uh, the mayor's attorney.
We do have, I mean, we do have tobacco, brand vaping free, the state county cover stuff. Um, as far as all properties, well, we are attempting to do this to align this ordinance with our current, with our current no smoking ordinance. So, the, the intent was to actually no vaping with our no smoking ordinance. So, in other words, we, we pulled in the properties that were specifically no smoking, um, except for one or two of them. So, during the discussion of the board, if everyone will recall, um, the discussion was that maybe it was too restrictive to not allow smoking at all of our properties, and some of our properties have designated non-smoking areas. So really the intent was to pull in the no vaping along with the no smoking areas, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you, anyone else?
I think the, the, one of the main purposes of this was, um, we have a lot of people baking and smoking at our sports complex and at other areas where we have children and, and everybody else, that, and so it's offensive to some people. And so, uh, I brought this forward several months ago, and we did discuss, uh, everything that we own, all the buildings and boat ramps and roll-off sites, but, um, it's very, it would be very difficult to enforce this at a roll-off or at a, at a boat ramp. So this is at least a start, is the right direction.
Okay, anyone else? If not, the floor is now closed for the public hearing, and, um, I would entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Moody, second by...
The roll call, uh...
Mr. Moody? Mr. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Dent?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Siegel?
Aye.
The, uh, motion passes by United States Board. Thank you. Item here, the board to hold a public hearing set for this date at nine twenty-five A M, are assumed they're act as possible to hear an appeal to Beret's free grant by the Taylor County Planning Board to the Steen Hatchie Marina and Dead End Vat.
Um, both parties that are involved in this request that it continue to December the ninth, and I told them I thought that y'all would do the bad. Well, you, you know, motion to continue.
Come on, it didn't have to be a certain time, it could be a topic for advertised, okay?
I would say, you know, you probably wanna do it at the same time as you did, if you have this one at nine twenty-five, you know, you come to the other and...
Does that meet the normal requirement?
So, yeah, well, nine twenty-five at night.
No, can't wait.
Six twenty-five then. You'll tell them if you're six twenty-five, if that's their time, if everybody's time, then, you...
We don't need to do a motion to, you're thinking about...
I think it would be a good idea, um, because we've got, I move, I move. The way I'm doing it, it's gonna be up here. Yeah.
You got a motion?
I move.
Yeah, your motion, last one, your head, second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion? If not, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. Consider items eleven through eighteen, are there any questions about this, consider items? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, okay.
Motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Moody, any further discussion? If not, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. Public request number nineteen, Scott, Mr. Kelly, the Paris manager and Chuck Thompson, St. Holloway's corporate manager, who will be typical, so we'll send those mail to here to provide update on the St. Holloway water supply project. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having us this morning. Uh, just a couple of comments from me and I'll, uh, turn it over to Chuck. Uh, one, uh, thank you for your continued support of this project and the professionalism of your staff. Uh, they've been a joy to work with, and also, uh, to be able to say thank you to the community for their, uh, rock solid support and sustainability of this project. And the progress that we're making is, is, uh, is, is good, and we're about fifty percent complete. And, uh, that's partly due to the, the great support we're getting from all of you and all of the community. So, I'll turn it over to Chuck and let him provide another...
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you for letting us speak, congratulations to you, up there. Uh, I, I feel like a repeating record that I come, that, 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 uh, continued, you know, on, it's a long project. And two things that happened since the last time we spoke, of course, is we finished all the blasting that was going on down at the asphalt area, future asphalt. Uh, we did a whole bunch of, of, um, blasting of rock down the ham, the Peterson Landing Road, the dirt road going to Peterson Landing, and that's been completed. Uh, we've actually gone under our second river crossing, which is out in the middle, basically, of the Ford Rivers, uh, Timber Company property, but it went under the river. And, uh, we've actually saw a hike behind the Charleston Cemetery's roll-off site, which was a major, uh, concern, that we didn't minimize impact to access to the public and all that. Fortunately, did it without, I think, impacting any operation, essentially, um, mostly, I said that we moved some containers and staff and some great help in it there. So, some things coming up. Uh, been talking, I think, since the very beginning, that we're about to go under the U S nineteen ninety-eight roadway. You know, originally, it was one of the first things we were gonna do, and we actually, uh, um, determined there were some high water issues that we needed to change our technique. And, uh, the District Two B O P staff has been working, uh, with us to change from what's called jacking board to actually pipe ramming, where I've got a ram of casing all the way across without boring it out until after it's over. A little bit different, uh, technique, and that term that's just been approved, although we're gonna not do it till January, because of the holiday period, we're trying to, uh, utilize efficiency with equipment. So, that's happening in January, we're about to begin working with Kenneth on doing the same thing on the bucket. We're gonna still push the sleeve on the bucket, but instead of it being a jacking board, it could be a ramming. Um, we will, uh, in the, in the beginning of the, of year, first quarter, we'll be down, so we'll be running one lane at that Lower Hampton Spring, as we've been talking about, that'll end up being implemented. And we will keep traffic access to, uh, people access down to the, to Hickson Camp continuously, but there will be some traffic control, we're going one line and, uh, back and forth. And, uh, and so, we'll be doing that, and we also will have a great, uh, uh, impact when we actually go through the, the sleeve that's already there underneath the Hampton Springs River. So, this traffic impact, uh, coming up, that we, uh, we've worked great with Hank and Making Sure and Communications and, and Wanda, uh, getting it out to all the, the, whether it be schools or the, the, uh, the, uh, emergency service people so they know where the impact, and by the way, we are detouring the golf course road right there, uh, between Holt and the entrance to the country club. That'll be before starting today, for one week. Uh, we're actually going through that crossing right now, and so unfortunately, if you haven't heard of the golf course, you're heading, heading out to Timbering, you gotta go around the pocket, uh, kinda down there at least for this week. And so that's been well communicated, so. Can I answer any questions or, or concerns? Any of the commissioners?
Yes, I will.
One thing I appreciate, y'all saying behind the company that's doing the work on fixing the holes in the road down there.
Even if safe down there, it's ugly down there right now, from an appearance standpoint, but I believe it's, it's, it's safe. When I say ugly, it's path work at this point, you know, they, they keep the path, they...
Right, we're beat up.
But, uh... We're gonna make that look right at the end, appearance-wise, good, you know?
Any other questions? Well, I wanna thank y'all for routinely coming and keeping us and the public informed and up to date. Your sudden offerings, and, you know, we really thank you for being here and, um, looking forward to seeing you again.
Yeah, I want to, I have a very thankful... We'll be back.
Thank you for being here, I'll see you. Item twenty, Kirk Johnson, Steve Johnson, who appear to discuss proposed drainage improvements for Steen Hatchie.
Hello.
Hi.
Other key, we now, uh, hand everything over to Kenneth, but, um, here I do, we have to recommend that he would do as well. Uh, I mentioned the road company, um, estimated cost for doing section, uh, idle parts of Steen Hatchie carrying out the, first and foremost, the priority, second, and more, the, uh, south, excuse me, uh, then seventh, and then last, the first, the vast majority of the drainage improvement to the entire Steen Hatchie town. Uh, that'd be a great, great Hampton, um, necessary Hampton. Uh, the estimated cost for each section will be between three and four hundred thousand dollars. That would provide two six-by-eight foot culvert pipes, approximately thirty feet wide on each section. Uh, we already have two existing on first, that would add additional two. They believe that they could work and around and keep the two existing there off, as they are. And then add two more to, and this helps improve that, really support the section, the marsh leading out to the river. Um, very important, doing all this research and what, how we feel that, because it's so important, we'd love to see it done as quickly as possible. Feel like that, you know, second and seventh would be a great start, you know, first and kinda wait to the start. Got two six-pipe, a culvert pipe. Of course, the people of Steen Hatchie, probably rather than first, um, first, but it's a priority, for the improvement of drainage, for them to see how good it works with the two-six-pipe, put culvert pipes on second, seventh, first. And then moving off from there and talking about future improvement, almost at the same time, because we've still diverted one thumb here. As if you turn off to the right off the park there and go into the dead end area where I own homes, which is, um, Allen Lane and, uh, Fourth Avenue. Um, there's also an area in there that's very vital to the next part of that cross that, because a lot of that's done in there. And there's a desire for all the people who live in that area to have milling put down, or constantly coming in there every time the rain on holds, I mean, they would fit it last week, it's already got on hold from the last rain. And it, it would save money in the long run, you know, it might be a possibility to pull up the road on second, that would use that product. I don't know how we do that, but that's possible or not. In any event, that's my, uh, kind of update, and, uh, our desires to have this moved forward as quickly as possible. I think it would be a great thing in terms of, uh, customer satisfaction, if you will. You know, the people of Steen Hatchie, I just kinda get the sense that they feel like they're slighted and whatnot. And I feel like this is something that we've done enough, and we know enough, that having the golf course built there and all the seven states that you have to meet, something that could get done before the fall season next year go along with the public, so, not with filthy things, well, that's also a good mindset.
I'm sure that this board is committed to wanting this issue to the very end. And if you recall, uh, initially, we had discussed boat ramps and those kind of things, um, as a way to use the, uh, some of the factory money. And then we, we looked at it again, and we decided to do this, so I don't want the Steen Hatchie people to feel like they're left out, because we're putting forth a huge effort to, um, to remedy that problem down there. And very glad that we can do it. Um, any questions, someone more?
And I'm gonna hold a sound duty to, to bring that sentiment across to people, so everybody knows that we're moving forward and that it's gonna get done. You know, they're, they're all, what they're gonna have is win, right? You know, so if we can have, if I can get any updates in terms of our progress and where we're at and where it might take a little more time in terms of getting Army Corps engineer or a, or a third-party engineering firm to do what they have to do. But I'm sure they're gonna come to this, this conclusion that this is the best and the most cost effective remedy for the situation.
Is that good? You're working with them?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the board has already had assessments with, uh, an individual from Army Corps who is putting, uh, or providing information and flow of some of the insight into funding opportunities to address that area, um, specifically.
Yeah, I agree.
Excuse me, I did hear you said that some of the victims, you know, feel slighted. Yeah, I mean, just feel like they're not treated in the same respect of the constituents closer to Perry, if you will. Yeah, I mean, just feel like they're not treated in the same respect of the constituents closer to Perry, if you will. And I'm just sharing with you what I hear and feedback that I've acquired over five hundred signatures. You know, as I'm going along these businesses, I'm, you know, just kinda listening to the pulse of the community and whatnot, giving you that feedback and, you know, that's something that can easily be reversed. You know, by doing this something that they know is needed for a long time and knowing that, you know, this is something that works and changes and takes time in regards to people who may be in areas where they have a personal storage issues or whatever it may be. But it's, uh, it's a huge step and probably the biggest step ever made in Steam Hatchie in terms of engineering roads or something that's going to affect that, uh, pretty good majority of the people who live in the heart of town.
I can assure you, that's not my feeling, that Steam Hatchie being left out, and we have the whole kind of sound duty, what is it? You know, I think they're getting their care. And our last action was to restore money from the, the dedicated to that area, uh, tell them that I, I feel like they're not yet being slighted and if anything, we can do to help them. We're doing our best right now.
Thank you, and we appreciate that and, uh, you know, in terms of Steam Hatch, again, I'm gonna reiterate that I think it's one of the biggest gems of Florida under the fuselage. And the operating for the growth of, um, tourism is tremendous because I have rentals and I know that my, my are the higher dollar rentals. So, no girl has one to rent for the middle place, Elton Town to rent, we rent every week. So, the demand there for more rentals is there, you know, in reference to Dead Man's Bay, whatever they're doing there. That's what, let them do what they're just trying to do, because I know the man behind that, he owns a parcel land, he's active, he's gonna do it right. You know, and it's gonna be just another app and another, uh, revenue generating base for Taylor County. You know, we're paying a five percent bed tax and that can get better and bigger and, and I, you know, we have great weekends over there too with the Cizer Craft Festival, another example of supply and demand. A lot more people have come to town, I can imagine how many people would be in town in Florida to buy a weekend if they had, you know, a bunch of hotels and whatnot, I'm not gonna say that, I mean, think it was ever.
Well, I would say you're a fan of that to go with Steam Hatchie.
Oh, it's a great place, I mean, I've lived in Florida all my life and all over for, for over fifty years, so, you know, that's the way I view it, you know.
We appreciate what you're doing.
That's why I'm invested in the community there and why I'm here now, you know.
And we, we thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Stand Ridge Ray, Steam Hatchie. First, I'd like to say that what Mr. Jones proposed about a specific area in Steam Hatchie does need to be done. However, as a Steam Hatchie resident, I feel that an overall stormwater drainage plan for all of Steam Hatchie should be completed and presented to you before any stormwater, immediate things are paid for or contracted. Uh, short of that, I would thank you as the board to note which is the most important thing for the residents of Steam Hatchie. Secondly, I would like to voice my opinion that you have not forgotten Steam Hatchie, that you stay forward. Every time something comes up, um, in the past, I'm going back twenty years or more, there may have been a little prejudiced bias. I think that's in the past. I've been working with your board in various positions in Steam Hatchie for a long period of time. And I've never given a stone's fall. Other people that I've sent to the commission have not given a stone's fall. You've listened to us, you've reacted when reaction was needed, I appreciate that very much. I'm sure you will continue to do that. Anytime I can be of help, please call me.
You've, you've always been there to help us and we're grateful to be here and good to have you here, kinda keep us up, keep us up on Steam Hatchie. And I will tell you, um, the intent of this endeavor was to cover the entire Steam Hatchie area. It wasn't this far, this little touch of this place or that, it was, when we talked about stormwater drainage issues, it was for Steam Hatchie. So, I can assure you, we're gonna do the best we can.
Yeah, actually to avoid some further effects. And, uh, the local mitigation strategy work group, we focus on Taylor County, not, not, we focus on Alton Hole. We all know that during the recent high rains and there were many areas that, that experienced inundation. It's those areas that we would focus on first to address drainage issues. We didn't look like it's anyone's unit.
And I, I appreciate you reminding us of that because, um, most of the time we talk about this, we, we do say that it's not just Steam Hatchie. We all have areas in our districts that, where we have flooding issues, but just, you know, we're having a presentation from, 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 whatever, Steam Hatchie, then we're talking about now. No, we're not gonna be good about the rest of the county.
Right, and I would appreciate that you get the complete study and then prioritize from the worst to the least.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so it comes forward to him now?
Okay, yeah, it won't be that long, I just wanted to fill him in because obviously he hasn't been to the meeting where my brother, as an engineer for the Army Corps of Engineers, took his own time and did a complete model of the Steam Hatchie area, not Taylor County, but just the, uh, Steam Hatchie area, as a comprehensive plan. We went out and looked at everything on the golf course builder, so we have this experience and he did say, please look at it, also have a third-party engineer come out and look at it. But you're gonna come to these same conclusions that properly prioritize, oh, the golf course builder, I know what needs to be done first, it has to start the river and work away. And that's, uh, my brother Keith, I, we have to commend him, he took a lot of the time to model this entire thing and he really couldn't have it done any better without a tremendous expense with, with any care. That's probably the stumbling block, why this never happened before, because you didn't have somebody with that type of expertise volunteer to highlight the problems and then which he did, uh, just wanted to fill it in.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you and your brother.
Thank you, appreciate it.
County Staff Autumn Twenty-One, the board considers an approval of the test before signing the big game transit in town show during the holidays from December the ninth, twenty nineteen, to January the third, twenty twenty, as a candidate by January, this big grant coordinator.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Vicious, he handed me a check this morning for the entire amount, um, to fund three hundred and seventy-five dollars so this will not have to come from local funds, he has, he has agreed to fund the entire amount, so thank you, Mr. Vicious.
Now, to have every you, we appreciate that.
It's a pleasure to do it, I, I tell ya, I walk out of my office once every day and the bus comes by, you know, and I wave and they wave back, it's just good for our hearts, that's what I do.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve?
That's moot. I agree with you, I agree with you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner here, second by Commissioner Murphy, even on the second. If not, all in favor say aye, also stand by, motion carries. Autumn Twenty-Two, show by mosquito control coordinator to appear to discuss mosquito control operations. Apologize again, uh, when we had the staff, um, presentations last week, I thought about how, um, you were inadvertently lift off, um, you apologize for that and just, um, appreciate you coming back, thank you, and good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, okay, so the mosquito control is, uh, kind of strange for, um, you never know how, predict what's gonna happen, how it's gonna happen. You never know how many people we're gonna have, uh, it's not, uh, like other operations or, you know. Yeah, we do a little more than last year, might be a lot less than last year, but we never know, uh, we had a very warm winter and very wet winter and I was expecting a really bad season and it was over next last season. So, it's very, very dangerous, so it's really, um, you just don't know. All right, so, uh, the duties that I entertain every year is train and supervise, uh, new employees. We have spray drivers and we have seasonal calling spray drivers, which is a very difficult position because it means they can't depend on any sort of income. Uh, so it's basically just sort of an extra money kinda situation for people looking for work in the evening. Um, you never know how many butterflies are gonna come, how many are gonna need, again, going back to the, what's the mosquito season gonna look like? Um, we do have surveillance operation to determine what mosquitoes are doing out there, how bad the populations are, where they're at and, you know, how the people are doing with them and where the water is standing, that's where the mosquitoes are gonna be, the most, uh, heavy and prevalent. Um, we maintain this equipment, must have, uh, undergo, I have three spray trucks and the, um, equipment, um, uh, surveillance maintenance and, um, calibration every year. This, the machinery is regulated, chemicals regulated by state, federal regulation, also the chemicals is regulated, so all this has to follow all these regulations and be kept in balance and used appropriately, fully properly, and first properly. Um, we do have, I, I try to keep very good public relations with all the residents, we have call-ins all the time, people call in and tell me, you know, what the situation's like in their neighborhood and I, um, try to do public, um, spot. When we have the act day at, uh, the Forest Capital recently, we have an S-Dax, uh, Florida Department of Agriculture, um, representative come out and we display and, uh, presentation for the children all day. Um, we, uh, have reports, again, it's a state regulated, so we have to, um, do reports every month and then the yearly reports that need to be done to the state. Um, and then, you know, students that, uh, undergo, um, this year, I hired two new spray drivers. Uh, we did have retention of some of the former spray drivers and this happens every year. Uh, again, I never know how many spray drivers are gonna stay from the previous years and how many are just gonna say, I don't wanna do it anymore or other reasons that they just can no longer, uh, do the permission.
And I asked you a question, I, Mr. Tom, that, oh, how old do you have to be to be a driver?
About eighteen.
Oh, so you just need a Florida driver license, um, and graduate high school?
I was just thinking about during the summer, that you have students that are looking for, you know, jobs, that maybe that would be an opportunity.
They have to graduate, that there's one of these, um, requirements is, uh, high school, right?
Okay.
Because, uh, again, we are, this is many thousand dollar equipment on the back of the spray truck that they're out there in at night alone, in the dark, in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, and separately regulated, finally with chemicals.
It's a very responsible position, so, uh, we do want them to have completed high school and of course have to have the driver license, I think, and the eighteen.
Thank you.
Uh, this year, because of the heavy rains, we sent a lot of the larbsides that normally I always, I have this larbside free to all the public. Most, normally I have them come into the office to pick it up, 'cause, you know, again, it shouldn't be besides the seasonal drivers. Um, but, uh, we did send some out to Steam Hatchie and also Wood Springs area, Steam Hatchie particularly because so many people were flooded in and, you know, had a hard time even getting out of the home. So, we sent that down there to make it a lot easier for them to disseminate, uh, the product into the water, to try to keep the mosquito population down ever before it got poor. Uh, we have a state agent that I have been on with to, uh, help with any, we, that state might be able to help me with. Um, we did get some extra grant money this year from the state, um, and that was really great, um, helped with getting enough chemicals to make sure we could be covered when we needed it. And then of course the state, um, reports that, again, have to be done every year. For next year, again, we'll be, uh, I'll be looking to hire and train new spray drivers if needed, um, we have, uh, a few going forward this year, but again, I never know. Until the year comes up and I call them up and say, do you still wanna do this job? And so, uh, then we'll, you know, look to hire, uh, any more as needed, um, maintain product and equipment. Again, we have to calibrate and, um, service the machinery every year. And keeping the citizens, uh, happy with the service that we can offer them, keep the mosquito population and, you know, any problems they're in under control. We are hoping to get another, uh, grant money, um, this year, so I'll be looking to see where we can disseminate that. And, and any questions?
Any questions from the board? Not?
Didn't do that.
Thank you. Oh, and thank you for coming back, we appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate it. And while we're at this point, you know, what I'm just gonna tell you, again, how much the, I, and I'm sure the rest of the board enjoys, these, uh, presentations from last week. I know that staff was really tired, they put that together, it was excellent and, um, the secret, staff knows that we really enjoyed that and we really appreciate it and look forward to that again next year. This is our Long County Administrator, Autumn, number twenty-three, the board considers an affirmation of the University of Florida's recommendation for county extension director as a different.
One two, yeah, yeah.
Oh, boy. Um, can we just call in, one twenty-three, and she's waiting, you come back, you got a pen to do?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Okay. You got a pen to do?
Sure, absolutely. As you know, Lori Wiggins has held the position as interim county extension director for over a year since Clay Olson's retirement. The reason for that is that the University of Florida had a hiring freeze. Um, this position was opened in August and was advertised by the University of Florida. Lori Wiggins was the only qualified applicant for this, for this position and is recommended by the University of Florida to fill the county extension director position. Ms. Wiggins has been employed by the University of Florida in Taylor County through a memorandum of understanding since nineteen ninety-seven as an extension agent. I feel that she would bring a wealth of experience and professional skills as the county extension director and I ask for the board to confirm her appointment. Um, the county's portion of the salary with a sixty forty split would be thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay, um, any questions from the board?
I'm pleased. No more highly qualified person than Lori.
I agree.
And when it's time, I'll leave the motion to confirm the decision of the University of Florida to hire Lori as extension director.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all.
We appreciate what you, appreciate it.
Yes, very much so. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All in both the same time, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You want to say anything?
I, I so appreciate the board's support for all the extension programs, but I have seen a lot of different extension programs, been on it twenty-three years and we just have, um, a lot of support for our county and I vote for them to across all counties in the state of Florida. And we don't realize, unfortunately, also we start working with other counties and we see how giving our board is in our county. I mean, like I, I mentioned in our presentation, we want to give, our board actually gives more than any other county in the state for our state's program. There's no other county across the state of Florida. So, I've done presentations at, with a national level about our program. So, it's just something that, you know, we should really call up for our county because we all very need, um, to be able to service the youth in our community the way we do, through that program. Um, so like I said, I would appreciate all the support for all of our programs. We are in process now, we will be hiring an ag and natural resources agent. So, the way that the extension program is set up, and this kinda helps people learn as well, we, um, have county extension agents, but each agent has a different program area. So, I work primarily with nutrition programs, we have Abby Dart who works with our four A P programs and then we have, um, Biga Blanco who works with our marine and environmental and natural resources. And then we have another county. and natural resources, and then we have another county extension agent who does ag and natural resources. And we're actually going to have them like a little more agriculture because that's, um, really more of our programming areas agriculture. We know, um, tree, even forestry is our number one agricultural commodity, so we need somebody really specialized in that area. So, that's not, any day, night, at all, um, will be advertised and we'll be hiring that to listen.
Well, you're a top-notch program, and your staff, and we really appreciate, I'm so glad that we can contribute what we do. And I do want to say that my little children, uh, Hunter and Marshall, they love that Orange Camp, and they look forward to it all year long, and even the first time they went, at, I think, ten and eleven, they came home and said, "We want to be a counselor."
I have a say, Amy McMillan, y'all remember years ago, and Amy, she started the vacation program, it started with two weeks, and then we've grown it now to cover every week of the time. So, it's something that, with her and these little baby, actually, and when I came in at the very, we just have continued to grow the program. So, yes, we've been very fortunate.
Again, thank you so much, and congratulations. Thank you. Okay. One that's opposed to a, county attorney to discuss opioid litigation.
Other day, um, I got letters from these folks that are doing the lawsuits, um, deals, um, and, uh, I received this letter which, uh, provided instead the recommendations I thought was to probably stay in the class, um, it's a class action to, you know, if you opt it out and you're on your own, my recommendation is to stay in the class and maybe don't get settled, or maybe you'll get a little bit of money, um, or, uh, I don't think we're going to get a whole pile of money because really, um, and, you know, they, they made me do some of the research, remember, if they came, it said, "Oh, I didn't have to do anything, but I had to do some of the research and, uh, set them up." Um, we'd be kind of fortunate in that opioids haven't been as much as the, um, the meth. Meth is sort of, is our problem, um, but there is some, some opioid problems, um, and so my recommendation is we stay in the class. I'm a class, I'm a class, I'm a student, it's kind of an action. And we don't have to say anything, you say it's a no.
And how many years will that, do you think it's going to take?
Uh, obviously, yeah, by the time we get them, you know, I don't know. Um, they, they have, they were close, it appears, you know, and I got kind of excited about a month and a half ago, um, because there was one family that, that owned, uh, one of them, and they, they made a, an offer, but I, I had a couple of houses and stuff, but, uh, how, I'm curious, how many, how many didn't have kids? Uh, a lot, like, make like five or six, or seven, eight, nine, yeah. I mean, it's, uh, and, and it's going to be, this class, like, there's going to be other offers, you know, just like the, um, you know, when they did the tobacco, uh, class action thing, everybody thought the battle was ended, and then there was, I'll shoot, I'll shoot, I'll shoot, uh, 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 shoot, regardless, just probably just tobacco.
Saying that stuff, okay.
No, I, yeah.
Is this required by?
Uh, I think you just have to, yeah, just go and promote this to the same class. Motion stays in the class, makes sense.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, sent by Commissioner Murphy, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same time? Motion carries. Thank you. Allen twenty-four, the board can consider possible employment of citizens as the chairman of South County Administration.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber, we discussed the possible option to, um, give our employees a work performance incentive, um, and I'm just coming back in for the board to ask for a vote on that. Um, we have around two hundred and sixteen full-time and sixty-three part-time employees. We would also like to include our current seasonal calling employees, um, and give them, I wish they gift cards, so, um, any directions from the board on that?
Part-time, how many?
Um, our last count was sixty-three. I, I did not get a recent count, but it's somewhere around there.
Yeah, the same as seasonal and public.
Seasonal, common, I, it looked like twenty-six, and then part-time, twenty-six. I need to see that. The last numbers that we looked at is two hundred and sixteen full-time, sixty-three part-time, this is the end of our paper, and twenty-six seasonal calling.
Would you give us the options again, of, as to the amount and the cost?
Yes. Or, um, we laid out four different options. For a hundred dollars for full-time employees, fifty for part-time, and twenty-five dollar gift cards for seasonal calling, it would be thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents. For two hundred dollars for full-time, a hundred dollars for part-time, and twenty-five dollar gift cards for seasonal calling, it would be eighty-one thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-six cents. For five hundred dollars for full-time, two hundred and fifty dollars for part-time, and twenty-five dollar gift cards for seasonal calling, it's one sixty-three, two thirty-nine, fifty-five. For seven hundred and fifty dollars for full-time, three seventy-five, for part-time, and twenty-five dollar gift cards for seasonal calling, it's two hundred and thirty-four thousand, five twenty-seven, and seventy-five cents. And for a thousand dollars for full-time, five hundred dollars for part-time, and twenty-five dollar gift cards for seasonal calling, it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and nineteen cents.
Thank you. Thank you. What is the project of the board?
My attorney, may I speak first?
Sure.
We had a discussion at a workshop where we don't take any action, and I left, there was a consent to the board, I thought, first was a thousand dollar option for, uh, full-time, and five hundred for part-time, and we didn't discuss it, but, uh, we shut, the seasonal.
We did not. I did not realize at that time that that's what we did in the math.
And it's twenty-five dollar gift cards, those, that's what I said.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the option for thousand dollars, and, yeah, performance bonus, five hundred for part-time, twenty-five dollars gift card, three. Make that to cover anything?
Yeah, go ahead.
That stigma of, like, we trade that a little bit for a twenty-five dollar. You know, that's, that's, I, I'm really, I'll make my motion. Okay. Hundred dollars, um, that twenty-three, hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Do you want to figure that in the form of a cash payment, or like a card?
Leave that to you to stress.
Okay, yeah.
I, I got some comments last time from a few Florida students about, "They don't want to be a woman." Yeah, right.
A, a cash payment would be.
Cash payment, sorry. That would be a offer.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Page, not a second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussions? If not, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same time? Motion carries. Thank you. So, what this will do is approve, maybe funding for this, and then at the December ninth meeting, there will be a reservation for your approval to, to train for the final.
So, that's, thousand dollars for food, and five hundred for the, for the, for our current seasonal calling.
The Allen twenty-four, the county administrator to discuss informational items.
Um, I only have two items, and both I'm very happy about. The Harrison Blue Lardicide is, the site work is substantially complete. What we have left is the replacement of the tenting, and we are currently paying close for that, and we haven't had a good response, but we will keep on looking to, to try to test that tenting. And also the Hampton site, the Hampton Grant Co site, um, is substantially complete, the construction is substantially complete. We can begin advertising for that position, I would say within the next several weeks.
Good.
That's all I have.
That's all.
Thank you, Kim.
Good job.
Allen twenty-six, comments and concerns from the public regarding, invite anyone here that's not on the agenda would like to see? If not, I want to invite you, any local, any town, folks, any sports, I will cut out the cell phone. We really appreciate you being here today.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Brian Adams, I work with the Department of Transportation, and I am the production lead for the Sun Coast Connector, uh, with, with Commissioner Beagle, who's serving as a, uh, task force number four. And my team here, I've got Brian Rucker, who's one of our project managers in Duane and Ham, and then Rosemary Woods, who's now been hired as our, our manager, she's now a part of us from Hattie. So, so share some information of where we're at right now in the process. Uh, we've had two task force meetings, our first task force meeting was down in San Francisco, and our second task force meeting was in Manito, and, uh, it's with forty-one member task force, um, group, and, uh, during the first task force meeting, the, the main objective was to help our task force members understand what the role calls, and then to apply the study area, so the Sun Coast Connector was fifty-eight counties that goes from Citrus County all the way to Jefferson County. And then for our second task force meeting, what we talked about was avoidance and minimization, but then focused more on the natural environment, so focused on wetlands and water quality and things like that. And so, uh, our third task force meeting is coming up, and that's coming up here in Taylor County, uh, December seventeenth, and that's going to be at the Forest Capital, at the ICA extension, and, um, and then we're going to have a follow-up, uh, community of the house that will be in the state county. And the focus for the third task force meeting is going to be talking a little bit about purposefully, uh, purposefully as described in the bill, and then also talking about, a little bit more about what we call the AMI process, which is the avoid, minimize, mitigate, and enhance, so we're going to look a little bit more at cultural and, uh, social issues, uh, that we want to make sure that we avoid as we move this project forward. I know that there's been a lot of concern about having an alignment, and seeing something on paper. Um, the department, right now, with the task force, where they're at, we're at a pre-planning phase for us, so this is really, really early for us, this is like taking a step back in our planning process, and our planning process is really where we start developing those alignments. But as the task force members give us those guiding principles, which are going to set the framework for us moving forward in the plan, which, um, we, we're going to start developing those alignments, so that probably for us will happen sometime in twenty-twenty, we'll start developing those alignments, and we'll have more, more information there. Uh, and then move into the next phase of the process, which is going to be the project development and environmental thing. So, we're really early on with our process, so we have a very tight schedule, uh, laid out by the building, um, and so we're trying to do the best to begin with our partners, uh, to move things along as quickly as we can. Um, but that's, right now, that's, that's where we're at, and then, of course, one, another thing that has happened, um, since our last task force meeting, that we've added to additional task force meetings, again, just to, to gather more information, provide there's, there's a lot of requests by our task force members, the, for different data requests, different, uh, evaluations, so we're adding, that, we're adding meetings for that we can provide that information, for discussion, for the task force members to, 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 uh, engage.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm going to ask for your reach out, we should be all individually, y'all would be in the car, and you can maybe call at several points, to explain what this means. I know now that everybody understands transportation process, the pre-planning, all the later construction areas, it's a part of the process, and I want to make sure it's clearly understood, also, you know, what it's going for, it's much more than a roadway, uh, bring opportunity into the area, utilities, uh, um, workforce development, a whole variety of things, it's not just what you typically hear, not really bringing a new roadway into our area, so that's, um, where I'll, I'll be available to, um, meet with, you know, county explaining a little bit more detail, and then, uh, open houses that are on the third tier, um, we'll be explaining that to the public as well, because, you know, it's not really more roadway projects, it's not just sitting on, on the house, it's got a lot of detail to it, and it is, um, something new for Florida, it's a very exciting time for Florida, um, that this is something that has not been done in, in this area of Florida, or anywhere for that matter, so you want to make sure everybody clearly understands, there's a lot of misinformation out there, I've read a lot myself on social media, social media sites, so we want to make sure it's clearly understood in each of the communities. I'll leave it on my card, and, you know, anytime, you, you're welcome to, uh, all, you know, little freaks out, and maybe you want to, I'll set you through the process, where we are, and explain anything that, um, you know, better that you may be questioning.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
There aren't a lot coming.
Are there any questions from the board?
Easy, you can hear it.
Thank you.
Yes, Brian and I, uh, two of us.
Five, nine, five, yes, sir.
Oh, I'm like, oh, put them right in the same ear, I doubt it. Never anybody tried to listen.
Double lock, yes.
I was so happy when I met y'all at, I mean, I knew who you were, and I didn't know the two of you involved with this extent, so I was really happy to see the conversation, and, um, it, you know, just thank y'all so much. Uh, any questions from the board?
All right, I'm fine.
I know y'all have that zone.
I, uh, was complained by a citizen, he was very unhappy about the toll of coming through this county, and he blamed me for, uh, not speaking up against the forty-one member board, that, that, those folks that I'm standing with are appointed by the governor. He said I didn't do this, and he said some of that board is from Leon County, is that true?
Yes, there's, uh, the capital.
And then you've got members over there in Long Island County, and things not going in either direction, and he was questioning me about it.
I see.
Got an open house coming up, you can ask all these questions at the open house, you know, pretty much come here.
Now, my odds are one in ten, when you show up, but it'll be on, on county.
It might help for y'all to understand, and, like I said, there's a lot of misinformation out, there's, there is a forty-one member task force, and, there, there's, the, the study area goes from Peculiver all the way up to Long Island, Jefferson County, so you have the representative, representative from each commission, or, uh, county administrator, you have representative, the Leon County Commissioner that's on, on the task force is actually part of the CRTPA, that's the PPO for the area, if you will, because Jefferson County is in the, um, capital region, um, PPO there, so she's representing that area. You have members from DEP, uh, Department of Agriculture, Florida Chamber, all the non-governmental agencies, which are like thousands from Florida, Texas, Florida, online, uh, representing the environmental groups out in the states, um, you know, you talk variety, I mean, there's a lot of different representatives, just to make sure you get all the opinions from all areas, so it's not just, you know, the people that want it versus, you know, whatever, but they, they just, they try to get a good, well-rounded group to, to represent all areas of, uh, the, like I said, the environmental agencies to the Florida Chamber, so you've got them all sitting at the table, as, as Commissioner Beagle was already saying, and they're just a very good group.
And, and I want to add that out of the forty-one task members only base are actually representing specifically our county.
Jay County, definitely.
Any, any other questions from the board?
I'll raise some change, but, no.
Probably, same first.
Probably, so, then I'll have some open minds wanting to see if this will happen. Way we'll go, yeah, that's the meaning of that, yeah, what's our topic, my, in my backdoor.
That's what I'll kind of help, step you through process, the howlers, there's a lot of people when we have task force meetings, they're ready to line on that right now, and they'll see it all, and that's, that's part of the process. I've been doing it for thirty-three years, it's a bank company, uh, started right out of college, and, and doing this kind of project, and there is a process to follow, and we're reflecting, and pre-planning, so, um, we'll have multiple public meetings throughout the process, through the next year, there's, um, I mean, I mean, but, yeah, and, and there'll be some specific to- Through the next year, there's, um, you know, many, but, that, yeah, and, and there'll be some specific to this area, so people will have the opportunity to come out and voice their opinion. And through the next phase, there'll be multiple opportunities again, and again, and again, all the way through. So it's not like, uh, you only got one chance to voice your opinion. And it's, it's an open house format, you can come in, talk to whoever you want to at meetings, you can see the information. You will not be seeing, uh, just for the record here, you will not be seeing a lot on that, because part of the task force is just to develop, um, criteria that's to be evaluated. So you will not see a lot on that for a very long time, and it's just part of the way that we do transportation development, partner. Just, just in case y'all get those files again, you won't see, at the next meeting, you know, you will not see, uh, like.
That's been, yeah, the questions that I've, that I've gotten, is where is it going to be, where is it going to be? Some people already have heard where it's going to be. I said, well, I don't, they have not given me any information about that, and, um, so that's the, to, to me, that's the number one question, is where, where is it going to be? And then some of the other concerns have been with the environmental, um, issues, and, you know, the honey, the hunters, and the, um, people that enjoy the outdoors. And then I've had some positive comments from some of the business people that, um, see it as a, as a, as a good opportunity for growth. And so, um, the, you know, the thing is, I think a lot of people have formed pretty solid opinions so far without a whole lot of information. Every time I go to a meeting, I come back and I tell everything I know, which is really not a whole lot. I mean, but I, I tell, you know, I can't tell them where the road is going to be, uh, how far is it going to be from town? The only thing that I can say is that I'm very involved in, in working with, uh, Ken, our engineer, and, and administrator, and you all, that we will try to figure out the best route that we hope that we can influence, that would be, that affects us and not, say, deter to our, our community. But, um, is it all right if I ask anybody else in here if they have any questions? Does anybody in the audience have a question? Wow. Okay, good. Well, again, thank you all so much for being here and, and, and come back. I know Rosemary, you said you're going to come once a month, and we're going to just put you on the agenda, and you can do it just a little, talk to us, and, um, and, and I'll pass along what I learned at the, at the meetings, and, um, you all come back anytime.
Just, just before we leave to clarify, because I've seen some of the same comments about, oh, there we go, we're spinning again. I can guarantee you, there is, does not inside it. I mean, if you can verify that, that is absolutely not true.
But the thing, one thing that we can count on then, is that there is going to be a road, right?
That's, that's all, that's all part of the recommendation from the task force members. You guys are setting that framework for how we move forward. So it was an exception for us, early in y'all's campaign.
You, you, you read, you read about, and read, this is all brought about by some of the, um, the governor, uh, in twenty, the task force, to do certain criteria, um, and, and to return a report of opt-in or something, so.
Mr. Robert Horn. September seventh, we will be here.
We don't have to say, Commissioner, um, you have mentioned the amount of, uh, people representing on task force, and that's quite, um, important, for, for, to represent their counties. Because you have representatives from all different environmental agencies, water management, all different areas, but then also representatives from the county, so what, individual counties. It is important for them. That, that time to be at the table, we need that, hopefully.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm too about the, the quote-unquote alignment, that, you know, one of the outcomes down the road. Not in a locking key, or hitting a mall, or anything, where did I call, um, corridor, that's part of the task force's mission, and, and setting the principles to help guide where it goes in the future. So I think some misinformation might be that we just haven't released, uh, an alignment or corridor yet, and that, like Rosemary, it's a little too complicated. That's the kind of goal in, in having these meetings, and we've added two meetings in over the next, you know, ten months till October, to help clarify, and, you know, finally, to avoid and minimize impact, too, you know, the environmental, uh, and, and other aspects along the way. So avoidance of minimization has really hit on hard in the last meeting, and I'll continue forward, try to do the best we can with, with the court.
Well, I think our engineer, Ken, and I, and, we, Kelly, that we've, we've, we've got a good hand for telling that. We've been putting on that window exactly to do one.
Like, one of your, you know, uh, can you think of, I think of meeting, and the first thing to bring back to your team after the task force meeting, is, is to talk about workforce development, uh, opportunity to bring jobs into the area. You know, I think Ryan and I talked about, we would love to stay here after college to, to work, but there wasn't opportunity in, you know, in the field. So, you know, that hopefully is, is part of the mission to, to bring forward, to be to all counties, because AMI stands for multi-courts of regional economic significance. And the point was to bring that opportunity into the area.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we've talked about, the, the three others when we moved, sat down, is, you know, what can we do to enhance the possibility of maybe one day getting a distribution center, or, you know, we're looking at that aspect of it, plus, to minimize the, any negative impact. So, um, okay, well, thank you so much, and Happy Thanksgiving to you all. Anyone else from the public who wants to hear? Okay, if not, number twenty-seven, board informational items, um, please come on in. Mr. Page?
Want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.